I've never had that kind of power before in my life. We are following this meeting into order. We are not going into executive session. And we will go through a couple of possible modifications to the agenda. And so I'll go through, we'll do each one. I will look for a second and we will take a vote to make sure that folks are in agreement. The first change, the agenda that I would like to do would be to table two items in the consent agenda, and that is item seven point three and item seven point four. I would ask those be tabled until our next meeting. I make a motion that we table item seven point three and seven point four. Discussion from board members, questions?
Are these items that we are okay voting for at the next voting meeting?
From my perspective and anticipation of an executive session. Other questions, comments from folks? All in favor? Elder, are you in favor of that agenda change? All opposed? Jill, I apologize. That just hit me.
That was my, that was my vote.
Yeah, this is the most ableist I think I've been quite some time.
You can not enthusiastically.
You get a little, a little flag thing.
We'll make it work. Thank you, Jill. I'll find, I'll ask as well. Alright, so that agenda item, those two items will be tabled to our next board meetings. The next change that I would offer, again, I make a motion that we, now if I can pull the item, my apologies. I make a motion that we take the audits, item six point three. Take it out of the consent agenda and make it either eleven point five or eleven point six, whatever be the world's. Which is during business, board business.
Have you was that a motion?
I did make a motion and I would make it just eleven point six.
Uh, second?
Questions, discussions, concerns? And just so folks know, my goal would be that we'd be able to have a more robust conversation about the audit and what our options are for approval by state deadline, which is October fifteenth.
In moving it, do you also amend the language at that point or we amend it when?
We would amend it when we get there.
Thank you.
Or we have the option, Katie, to amend it when we get there.
What did you say was the deadline for the audit report?
October fifteenth of board vote is needed, which is Monday. Uh, all in favor of that agenda change? Fantastic, fantastic. I think it passed. And then the last agenda item that I would like to recommend that we change is to change item eleven point four, the jewel settlement agreement from a vote to a discussion. It needs to be voted on by November thirtieth, so we have time. And I, so that'd be my recommendation, that we keep it as a discussion item to learn more about it before we actually engage in the vote. Did I make a motion?
Did you?
I move that we changed item eleven point four from an action item to a discussion. Second by Elder, questions from board members? All in favor? Unanimous, fantastic. And then just looking at the rest of our agenda, so thank you, board members for that, and we'll write an email explaining some of those as well. We should probably make one more agenda item change, and that would be to begin our meeting with agenda item, if we are ready, Dr. Brown, uh, with the superintendent report or the report on the communication. But before we do that, I'm, I'm, you'd be ready for that. I want to make sure the board is okay with that as well. Too many Robert rules procedural things that we're trying to keep a hold of. So, board, I would make a motion that we also modify our agenda to begin our meeting with the communication report.
Second.
Second by Adam, questions, discussions? All in favor? Elder's in favor as well? Fantastic. So Tricia, did we catch all those agenda changes? I have them marked in my notes as well. Fantastic. So with that being said, we have shifted our agenda. We will take our time to make sure we get to seven P M. And we will yield to Dr. Brown and a report update on our communication.
Thank you for the time on the agenda, Professor. I'll invite my friends to the table, our communications team. And we will do introductions when they get here. I wish to use our time tonight to provide an update to our communications team and our strategies and some of the ways in which we are monitoring our success with communications and our continuous improvement efforts. Uh, and before anything, I wish to thank the board for your support. Again, I've been here long enough to been here long enough to know we had no budget for communications for a long time in the school district. And I remember the first contract was for about thirty thousand dollars to engage with someone to help us with communication strategy. And we struggled with that at the time. A lot has changed since two thousand and eleven. Most small city school districts are investing over a million dollars in communication teams and strategies. We're not doing anywhere near that, but we have invested, thank you for your support, in an approach to enhance our communication efforts. Uh, the communication should not only come from one person, the superintendent. It should be coming from a team of professionals. And I'm honored to be able to work with the great people to my right. I'll have you introduce yourself and maybe your, your, your titles. And, uh, and then we'll just go right into what we want to share with our board this evening. Thank you all.
Uh, Katie Hart, public information specialist.
Casey Pitzer, communications coordinator.
And I'm Margot Day, also communications coordinator. Nice to see everybody.
Um, so over the summer, our team met and we broke down how we're going to start thinking about this work for this year. And so we put together a spreadsheet and went through all of our goals, our measures and our metrics, um, and how we're gonna measure our success over the school year. And so we're thinking about that in sort of three separate buckets. Um, so external communication, internal communication, um, and with an equity lens as our third bucket. Um, so overarching for external, internal communication, um, we're looking to provide clear, concise and timely information for, to our ICSD students, staff and caregivers. Um, and the overall metric, um, we're looking to engage a number of people who see and engage with our messages by five percent each quarter, and we're gonna evaluate um, analyze sort of the sentiments, um, with an effort to increase, um, the positive feedback over the school year. Um, and we're gonna track this through a number of ways, um, through analytics on our website, social media, news stories, um, let's talk messages. And then thinking about equity, um, we want to make sure that our communication from the district provides clarity, support and a sense of safety and belonging. Um, and ensuring information is culturally responsive, accessible and available. Um, we're also gonna increase our own participation and collective learning, um, behind, uh, equity. And we're all, we're, um, tracking this through website analytics around accessibility, enhanced messaging around learning forward ICSD objectives. And yeah, and so, um, we have this slide up here and, um, we're gonna dive a little bit more into, um, how we're measuring and the metrics, um, for quarter one.
This is Katie. So if you can see the slide up there, we tried to divide up some of the different components of what we do on a daily basis. Um, something that I manage is social media. So up there you can see our current follower count and two metrics that we're tracking, which is reach. Reach is basically the total number of folks who have seen our content. So if, if that is either on Facebook or Twitter or on Instagram, those are the three platforms we use right now. Um, you can see the reach from this quarter versus the same quarter last year has increased exponentially. It's a pretty, it's a pretty good increase. Regularly, we post to each of these platforms every single day. Sometimes we post more than once a day. Um, and that's a big increase from last year as well. We were not posting nearly as much last time, but we're getting a lot more content from buildings, from principals, from students. Um, so we've been able to increase that area quite a bit. Uh, jumping down to where it says brand standards and style guide, the brand standards is a PDF. It's available to everyone on our website right now. Uh, it's basically a book that includes our logos, our colors, um, our fonts, all that's unified towards just kind of one district identity, which is really what we're going for. So our board members, um, our administration can use any of those assets all the time. Uh, something that a lot of our principals tend to use is the letterheads. So we have a lot of building letterheads. So any kind of communication that they send out is clearly, um, branded to their building. And we also have ICSD letterheads as well. Something new is our ICSD slides templates. We made a couple of those so that folks have branded content easily available to them, so that if they want to make a slide deck, a PowerPoint, they have that available to them. And then the style guide, right below that, is something that we've recently drafted. And I think listening to previous board meetings, we're interested in a kind of a style guide, right? Like where does the colon go? Or are we unilaterally capitalizing superintendent or not? So those kinds of components are addressed in the style guide. Exactly. We do, by the way. Um, so that is a guide that, uh, is in feedback grounds right now. I think you've recently sent it out to administrators. Um, and that will be something that we can all reference as well to try to keep a, a uniform, uh, more cohesive messaging system. And we'll pass it over to Casey.
So, as I'm sure you're all aware, we launched a new website this summer along with a mobile app. There are many better features of this website, but in terms of accessibility, um, we now have translation capabilities, which we had and then lost with our old website. And, um, we worked hard with Aptigie, the company that manages the website to make sure our website can be accessed internationally. And a couple of days ago, we got the Google Analytics from Aptigie, so we're going to be tracking more of the website data in terms of visits, what pages are most popular and where people are coming from, if they're coming from our socials or Google searches. And we did get some data from Aptigie on the app downloads. So we have about uh, thirteen, fourteen hundred downloads since we launched the app in July. Down over to publications, we have a monthly community newsletter, the E Insider, which starting last January picked, we were doing quarterly after COVID and then picked it back up to monthly last January. Goes out to about eighty-five hundred people, that's staff, families, other community members who subscribe. And the open rates are pretty great. The last two have been over sixty percent and I think a good open rate is somewhere between twenty and forty percent. So people are reading it. Um, and then the same with our monthly staff updates. That's the open rate of over sixty percent too, and that has, um, just updates and information relevant to all district staff. Um, and then the news stories on our website, we've had six July to September and then I think three more now in October. So, um, yeah.
And then looking at form requests and design requests, so last, the start of last school year, um, we created a communication request form, um, so that anyone, um, on staff can submit, um, a request for event coverage, um, document design, things they want pushed out on social media. And this helps us, they'll choose what building they're coming from or department, and this helps us track, um, where we're getting the most requests and where's, like, some areas that might need more support from us. And so now that we've had one year of that, we know, you know, who we need to look to, um, to be more proactive with. And just gives us an overall better sense of what to anticipate this year. Um, so thinking about what's next for the rest of the year, um, our web, the website is a big undertaking. Um, and so we've put a survey out, um, it's been in all of the insiders that have gone out since the start of school year. We'll include it in the next one. Um, we definitely want to hear from the community. Um, and we're you know, we haven't got a ton of, um, people who have taken it so far, but we're taking, like, we're reading them, we're looking into it, and we're going back to Aptigie to make edits. And then with Aptigie, um, so right now we use School Messenger for all of, um, our communication that's sent out to families and, um, Aptigie acts actually has the ability to do that. Um, so over the next year, we'll be transitioning away from School Messenger and everything will be um, sent out through Aptigie. And that's it. Open for questions?
I would, uh, uh, before taking some questions, I would say, like many of you, I also serve on multiple boards in this great community. And I gotta say, uh, on every one of our boards, people are saying, uh, we need to communicate better. If there's a board member or a board that says our organization has really nailed communication, please let me know who they are. This is an area that we should be continuously improving in. And as the technologies change, as the expectations change, people want something different. What we hope to hear is that there's a strategy, which I hope you heard this evening. And what I hope to hear sitting on other boards is that there are improvements, which people can then show. And I hope you heard that this evening. So again, thank you and a shout out to this amazing team. We've done quite a bit over the last year to enhance and to address what is a board goal around communication, internal and external. Thoughts, questions, reactions for us?
I just have two questions, short. Um, one was just a, any reason not to send a separate email for the survey, like if it's important just to send it out to everybody instead of tacking it at the end of something that people might not get to?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Um, I, we just try to be strategic about how often emails go out. But, uh, we can definitely do that. And we've done that for staff.
Okay. Uh, and I was just also, just, this was just totally curiosity, like, how do you decide on the story? Like, when you said we put out six stories, like, where did the stories come from? Or how do you, what's your process to decide, like, which pieces of information you're gonna develop into a interesting story? And like, how does it make the cut? I was just wondering.
Well, I think for the beginning of the year, um, we get some people who volunteer. Um, so that's usually how we start off. But so last year, we were able to track, um, you know, across department and building what stories we wrote about. And so this year, um, we'll look at that more closely and go out and find those stories. Um, we always send it out and updates galore. The ability to submit a story that you're interested in, then we sort of work together to do interviews, maybe get a photographer down there. Yeah.
Additional, oh, sorry.
I have a quick comment. I, um, I'm probably the most technologically inept person in the room. And I was at home today and using a different laptop, not my, not my district issued one. And could not for the life of me figure out from the website how I got the district email. Which is a weird thing, because in the past I've been able to find it quickly. So I, I went through Chromecast and brought up ICSD. Then I tried endless attempts at ICSD email, ICSD staff, I see. And it just would not show. So I, that's a sad story, but not just for the purpose of the sad story. I'm wondering if you ever, like, go out among people unlike yourselves and say, if you wanted to look up something about ICSD, how would you do it? Because I, I think there's information to be learned from those of us who are not particularly good at this. Just a thought. And I, I volunteer. I think I'm a, a average bad person at this. And, uh, it might, it might, you know, get you, your, uh, opens even more up there.
You are a one-person focus group.
If, if me, you, Dr. Brown, yes.
And, and Jill, just in the future, just to solve that problem, if you go to google.com and sign in like you would for a Google account, that's how you can access your, uh, the city school to your email. It's counterintuitive.
It is rather.
It's just through Gmail.
Yep.
Sure. Thank you.
Yep, I'm excited. But that idea, and I think we've had in the fact, in the past, right, ways to invite input? And, and I, and I haven't seen, I have seen a new website, but I haven't seen that part front loaded. Is there a plan to front load either the Let's Talk portal or, and maybe I just missed it.
I did see Let's Talk. So that was a good sign.
Yes, please, sir.
Hi, I just had a quick clarifying question. When you calculate your reach for your publications, are you calculating the total number of people it is sent out to and then open rates are the number of people who click on it? And if so, is there any other way to track engagement rather than simply the number of people who it reaches by email?
We can see clicks, so there are lots of links in our newsletters. And for each link, it shows us how many people are opening those. So that's a good way. And further down the newsletters, the clicks kind of fade away. So we have to work on maybe keeping the engaging content at the top or just shortening it up. Those are the, but yeah, open rates and then click rates are the main ones we look at.
Additional questions are coming from board members, yes.
So, um, we know that platform usage varies by generation, right? And so I'm curious as to, um, if you have a differentiated strategy, I guess, for caregivers, staff, students? Just because students are going to interact with platforms differently than, than other groups. Like, when are you going to be on TikTok and what's it going to look like?
I'm going to worry about stopping you from Facebook. That's a different.
I knew that question was gonna happen. Um, yeah, so the engagement and the, the age range of people who engage on different social media platforms varies a lot. Um, I think maybe one percent of students are on Facebook at that. So it's mostly families, but we still need to, to communicate with families. Um, we get a pretty high engagement from Instagram from students, um, which is great. So we try to push out information, not only in posts, but on stories in there a lot of the time. In terms of TikTok, I would love to collaborate with some students perhaps, um, and not embarrass myself making TikTok, but I see Lisa Nae over there. Um, but yeah, that is something that we look at, like, uh, which, what kinds of audiences are we getting from each of those is important, for sure. As well as Twitter slash X, um, which is another one, for sure.
Yeah, uh, well, first of all, thank you. Uh, I really appreciate the style guide. I'm, it's something I was gonna ask about. So that's great. Uh, thank you for the international access. Uh, thank you for the new website. Uh, so having said thank you three times, now I'm gonna ask for more. So this is an idea I wanted to run by Catherine, uh, but since it's come up here, I'll just go ahead and is two things. When we have caregivers who come in to meet with a teacher, to the best of my knowledge, they can look them up on the website and they can find the name of the teacher, the email address, and what subject they teach in, nothing more. Unless the teacher's somehow been spotlighted, uh, so, you know, in a, in a special focus or something. So uh, there's really not a lot of way for a caregiver to know who they're gonna meet with, that they're gonna meet with a teacher or who's sending notes home. And at the same time, you know, we're gonna go to the taxpayers, uh, later this year and ask for a big tax bill. And I think the taxpayers should know the high caliber of teachers that we're hiring. So I guess what I'm wondering is, could we have some kind of, uh, more information about teachers, a photo, credentials, awards, just basic information, if, if teachers were interested, you know, uh, can they, the public, I don't think, for example, the public realizes of, of the master degrees, for example, the teachers have, because there's really no place to, to my knowledge, to, to see it. So I'd like, for example, to go to the high school and see the science department, who the science teachers are, or what are their credentials?
I'm interested in exploring this notion with Catherine and others. As I'm looking at the professor there who has his face connected to his resume and Vida online, there are some unintended consequences that come along with this. So I would just want to think through this and then would it be everyone? And if folks opted out, then if their faces aren't there, if there's a judgment that may come, I hate to be the negative one here. But I just want to make sure we would explore something that is that cool, um, with all folks to think about the unintended consequences.
I think that's a conversation that is great to have. And what I do know is, um, and I'm sure there's, I'm not the only person here, that that labor then falls on my shoulders, right? And I create my faculty profile. I find the photo, I write this. And so there's been a lot of critique at Ethica College, sorry, uh, I see. Uh, there's been a lot of critique at Ethica College about can we add additional staff to help support that as well? But I think the idea, I think you're right, as a caregiver, I would like to at least maybe see a photo as opposed to go to Facebook and see if I can't, you know, spinster somebody or whatever, maybe Instagram, right? So we'll figure that out, but well, well, we're, we're, let's start the conversation. Absolutely. Love it. Thank you. I also have a couple of just quick questions. Some were already asked about sort of usage and age range. So thank you for that, Katie. I want to know if one, the style guide could also be shared with board members, if we're sharing with principals, because I'm quite certain that we can have some feedback or some questions that would help us in the work that we do as well. Uh, especially as we're writing policy and making other things happen. So if that could be shared, that would be great. And, um, how does the district's branded style guide at a district level? How does the, and maybe this is already answered, how does it also interact with individual school style guides, right? So I prefer seeing something from Enfield than I would the district, um, if I'm getting a response from the Enfield principal, right? So do we have style guides for our individual schools or is that something that we're considering or, and again, I may be late to the game, so.
Um, each of our schools has their own color scheme and their own logo. Um, so if you go to their individual pages on the website, you'll see their logo. And actually, the entire page transforms to their color scheme. It's a cool Aptigie trait. Um, and then all of the letterheads have their logo, um, incorporated onto that. So that's like a personalization. If a principal wants to use their letterhead, it's gonna have their logo on it. Um, I feel like building identity is really important to a lot of our schools. And some of them are still in the process of kind of establishing their logo, uh, how they want to relate to that identity. So I think that's like an evolving discussion that we can continue to have with buildings. But at least all of those items are located in one place in the brand, in the brand book for now.
Then my last question, I'll begin with a comment. I'm gonna follow, uh, Garrett. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, as someone who's been here for a number of years and been on the board, watching our communication shift and have a significant different amount of outreach to various communities is something that I don't take lightly. It's taken us a while to get there. Uh, I've heard nothing but praise for the new website. Um, everyone I talked to, um, is very much enjoying it. Noted from Jill's, um, experience as well, right? Um, and so the question I'm gonna ask is not necessarily an ask more labor, but, um, what, what additional support do you all feel that you need? Um, you know, I'm thinking about things like multimedia photographers. I'm wondering if we feel like there's enough to tell these stories. And it's not all about telling the story, but at the same point in time, it does help people engage with the work that we're doing. So um, and I don't know if I should be asking that question to Dr. Brown, to the communications department, maybe it's coming up, that budget season. I'm just wondering what additional support may be helpful in keeping this communication outreach going.
I have some thoughts.
How did I know you could have said that?
Well, maintaining the ongoing support for this team. I mean, it took us more than a decade to build the support network. And so as we face, uh, budgetary constraints going forward, there'll be places to look that will be much more strategic than looking in a place like this, if that makes some sense. And yes, photography is a place, videography is a place, there's some places in which we would expand, maybe not with additional staff, but with additional contracted services and supports and tools and technology devices. I looked at our camera, the camera that we were using now was the one I purchased on my first day on the job, because the district did not own a digital camera. So that cannon, even though it's cool now, it is fourteen years old. And there are better tools, right, to use. That's how you, but most importantly, we need folks to be patient. We always talk about our culture of love and the principles. Patience is one. And this notion of communication is one where I'm asking our community to be patient with. There are times when we, as an organization, wish to be thoughtful and more strategic and talk to folks before we respond or even communicate. Some things happen in our world over the weekend, and we have been thoughtful about when we would communicate out about it. That requires us to talk to focus groups, that talk, requires us to talk to experts, to engage with a lot of folks instead of the superintendent putting out a statement. That requires you to be patient and push back on this sense of urgency. And that's done in collaboration with the folks on this team. So that's just one example, but every day I see and feel our community expecting communication and embracing the sense of urgency when we're asking for some patience, so we can do this right. And appropriately, and most importantly, loving. And that requires some patience. So I will ask for that too, in addition to a new camera.
We'll talk.
Yeah.
Any additional comments or questions from board members or from our student reps as well? Please.
Thank you. Also, for anyone who doesn't know me or doesn't remember me, I'm Lisa Nae, I'm a senior at the high school. I really liked Mr. Blalik's idea of the teacher bios, but I understand I really liked Mr. Blalik's idea of the teacher bios, but I understand that maybe putting pictures of the teachers can have some not great unintended consequences. So I was thinking, what if we had teachers write like a short little paragraph about myself, like, you know, for my Spanish teacher, Miss Craig? Anyone who knows her, Miss Craig's great. She's wonderful. I love her. She really likes cats. And she really likes Spanish, and she really likes Jeeps. So she could like write a little paragraph about that. And we could all kind of read a little bit about our teachers. I think it would make it a lot less intimidating for them and for us. Because we would all kind of like know each other a little bit. So I don't know. I think that could be a fun alternative. Thank you.
Um, thank you. And if you go to our Instagram, Facebook, or Twitter, two weeks ago, we actually did start staff spotlights. And so we, and we asked questions like that. What would you be surprised, what would students be surprised about? That they didn't know about you. And so we're only on week two. And so we're planning to sort of do that once a week. And so every time we get someone nominate someone, we then ask that person who was nominated to nominate someone else. So we're hoping we can keep this going throughout the school year. So if you want to nominate your Spanish teacher.
Additional thoughts, comments?
Bill Star, one from the peanut gallery. So Dr. Brown made it very clear that we are going to need to support these roles. That means us as a decision-making body in possibly unforeseeable financial situations in the future. We're gonna have to decide whether or not this is sustainable, whether or not our scratch cooking is sustainable, whether or not our tech people and transportation who are now gonna be working on very sophisticated EV buses are sustainable. As we ratchet up our professionalism, we just have more interesting decisions to make. That's all I wanted to add.
Fantastic. And with that, thank you again for your work. Appreciate it. And we'll carry on with our agenda. Thank you greatly.
Thank you.
Fantastic, fantastic. Next, we have on the agenda, public comments. I don't think we have any folks who have signed up. Thank you. So again, I know I keep saying this, but I presume then there's no board responses. All right. And so we will move to our student reps. I think it was so long ago last time we were together. Who went first last time? Does it make a difference? Ethica High School, make it happen.
The first month of school has gone well. Classes have really started up with everyone having their first homework assignments and tests this past month. In terms of athletic events, the tennis senior night, which happened two weeks ago for girls tennis, was successful and they went on to become stack champions. The boys varsity soccer team also had their senior night on Saturday against Harsets. It was a good game. And the girls varsity soccer team has their senior night today. In other news, some students have been struggling with late arriving buses over the past few weeks. Last week, most days had an announcement in the morning, seeing that there were late buses into allow students coming in late. We were wondering if transportation issues are something that will persist into the coming months, especially with winter and snow. I did see two of the electric buses on my way to school on Friday, which was really exciting.
Simply put, we talked to Mr. Trumble this week about what exactly the rules are at IHS. So we're trying to restate and reemphasize a unified set of rules that all staff agree on. Students have been experiencing inconsistency with the rules being enforced, which varies by the teacher or administrator. And specifically, there is some concern around what the rules are on upperclassman privileges, such as juniors losing junior privilege and facilities offered to students during study periods and study halls and building security. We're working with Mr. Trumble to help implement solutions to these issues within IHS and have had really productive conversations recently. Based on this problem, we were also brainstorming about digitizing the attendance system for all staff, including substitute teachers, to create a faster and more accurate system. It is the school's goal this year to make sure that every student can be located at all times. And implementing a system like this would accomplish this goal while ensuring that time is used efficiently.
With regard to Claire's last point, we also talked about having some kind of system by which students could input their attendance. But that was just an idea. On top of juniors being a bit frustrated by their lack of free periods, despite the fact that seniors have maintained theirs, many are a bit annoyed by the lack of available spaces in which they're allowed to spend their time. We discussed with Mr. Trumble his safety concerns and raised concerns about how certain safer locations are disallowed, like the inside quad. While rules regarding other places with more safety concerns, such as the arts squad, are less heavily enforced. One issue is that not all students are even aware of the expectations, like Claire said. And they feel there's a lack of continuity and policy across administrators. So this has led to some students being evicted from spaces they were unaware they were not allowed to occupy. And hopefully, within the coming weeks, we can put together and implement a list of the current expectations and our proposed changes and talk about those with Mr. Trumble to try to move forward and decide a more cohesive plan for where students are allowed to be at all times.
Again, we've also been talking with Mr. Trumble about adding mirrors within the stalls of the junior neutral bathrooms. Based on initial student feedback, some students think that this will be a positive change and others have negative changes. So we're gonna continue these discussions moving forward and we're gonna keep gathering student feedback and just seeing what the work left for everyone. We've also seen a lot of positive changes in student decisions over the past two months. Thank you. And especially on Instagram, which is the profile that went to this use, not the public media. And it also gives students the option to repost ICSD stories and posts, which I have seen a lot of, especially last year when there was like those five weeks where we had some great snow days. Those snow day posts, I think, got reposted by every single person, at least on three separate profiles. So snow day has always been a lot of engagement. Also, students being able to submit their announcements is really helpful for clubs and student organizations. Because you, as the student leaders, can kind of decide what your, it's your own words about your club. And it helps reduce misunderstandings or confusions within the announcements. Thank you.
Okay, so LACS is also open running. We have our projects, committees, and ASM, so are now all functioning. Our most recent event was Fall Retreat in our forest. This has been kind of a very old LACS tradition. It's one of the very like core things to help us bring community together. It's important for students to have a strong foundation, especially when it comes to their futures. And school is one of those places where they can have that foundation. And it's a place for them to build. And having intergenerational connections between high schoolers and middle schoolers and staff and students, it's really one of those places where we can all come together. One of the great traditions inside of it is we have a talent show, which is a great place for people to build trust in the community and share some of their, well, great art. We had a student write a song that was kind of a parody of We Gonna Start the Fire. It was like called the ACS song. It was kind of just a highlight.
We had our open house the other week and that was good, a great place for our families to come together and understand what their children are up to, went smoothly. Our latest proposal, we had last Wednesday, was a proposal to bring back the LACS footbook that I wrote. It didn't necessarily pass, but I think we'll be voting again on it tomorrow. But yeah, I hope that will pass. One issue that we have had been having lately, however, is an issue with some busing. Not only in the mornings, the shuttle bus from here to LACS arrived for us to get to school at nine when our school day starts. But also in the afternoons, we have a couple of students, including myself, coming down here to take classes at IHS that weren't offered. And we have Route fifty that runs during the week and it's great, except on Tuesday afternoons when we have our projects. Route fifty has to run for projects and we were promised that we would get someone to cover that route for us. Except this is now the second week when no one has come to pick me up and I have arrived thirty minutes late to my IHS six period class. So yeah, that is an issue that I hope we can come to some kind of resolve soon. But I know that Boston has been a struggle recently.
Great. Thank you for the updates of board responses. I'll offer the first one. A transportation presentation is on the agenda for this evening. So I'm not sure that people get the answers to their questions, but it's something that we are focused on and we will have more discussion about later tonight. But additional response from board members.
I appreciate you bringing your thoughts to Mr. Trumble and to your respective administrators. Please do let us know if there's more information you need from us other than what the transportation presentation might present.
I heard a vote for snow days. Is that what I heard? I want to make sure that's on the record as someone who supports snow days. Sorry, Dr. Brown. And I have to ask, are all the cabins heated yet? Or there's still a big debate of heated cabins versus, oh, should I not ask? Okay, well, I hope that you had a heated cabin.
The ones that are heated smell kind of bad, though.
Well, thank you all for sharing. Well, we will continue on with our agenda. Thank you very much. This brings us to the consent agenda. With the noted changes that we have pulled out, two items, item seven point three and item seven point four. And we have removed the audit agenda, item six point three out of the consent. So I just want to make sure we know what we'll be taking the motion on to move forward. So we will entertain motions on the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second, move by more, second by Adam. Discussion, questions, debates. All right. Hearing none, then I guess we will call the question. All in favor? That is unanimous for everyone who's in the room. Mr. Harris is not here. I'm sorry, I did see your hand right there. I apologize. Yeah. Fantastic. Then we will continue on with our agenda, which brings us back to the superintendent report. Dr. Brown, do you have anything additional to say to the board?
No, I did not.
And then we will go to agenda item twelve, eleven point one, which is a transportation update.
Good evening, everyone. For those that don't know me, I'm Bob Van Karam, Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations, and I'm helping out in transportation services. And first, a shout out to Emily Tracy R. I did my slide presentation. And I didn't follow any communications protocol on branding. And Emily quickly branded it very nicely. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. Oh, where's my, thank you. All right. This looks much better, by the way. So I just wanted to spend a little bit of time tonight. I'm honored and grateful that I've had the opportunity to work at transportation more so than I have in the past fifteen years. Our prior transportation director, Liz Fox, who did a remarkable job, took a new job in a district close to her home, a ten-minute drive instead of an hour drive. And so we understand that and we thank her and wish her well. But transitioning during the summertime, as well as a new routing computer system. And I will say it worked, it worked well, but we did have to have the vendor from the company actually come and help during the first week of school because there were some, you know, as all new systems have, there were some bugs to work out. So through all of that, and this is where I'm really grateful that I had the opportunity to be down there more than normal, watching the professionals, everyone from the drivers to the bus aides, to the clerical in the office, to the dispatcher and the router, work with a system that wasn't working well, working without a a transportation director. It was remarkable. And one of the unsung heroes, Chris Sportsman, is not here tonight because he's on some training in Albany, required training. But how they worked with parents and students and principals, and you can't imagine how the first week or two of transportation is until you're down there. The phone does not stop. And there's literally a couple hundred, and this is no disparagement, I probably was one of the couple hundred when I was a parent of a student. They don't respond to the need for transportation until like the day before or the day after school starts. So there's a lot of just in the moment. And Chris knows every stop of every bus in this district, every, every road, every back alley. It's amazing the work they do. So a real big shout out to them. So I'm not an expert, but I'm gonna give you a little bit about transportation routes, a little bit about special needs transportation, a little bit about the maintenance of the buses, and a little bit about the extras that we do, the sports, the extracurriculars, McKinney-Vento. And hopefully, at the end of it, you'll know a little bit more about transportation services. Is that the next one? Okay. Yes, let's go to this one first. Thank you. No, 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 no. Believe me, I'm, I am very happy you made this look great. So what I wanted to do before we run this is I was watching some bus video. And it turned out to be the wrong bus. What I was looking for, I would have never found because it was downloaded from the wrong bus. But at the timeframe I was looking, I was like, this is not happening what I need. So I just let it run, thinking that maybe I had the wrong time. I had the wrong bus. So I was, I was multitasking, just waiting for what I thought would be coming up. And all of a sudden, I hear this horn on my, my screen. And bus horns are loud, even on a, even on a small speaker, they're loud. It caught my attention and it went on for over five seconds. I'm like, what is the driver honking at? And then from the vantage point of the camera, through the back of the driver's head, you could see out the front window. And here comes a car, and it didn't slow down. It was going thirty miles an hour. It had pulled over to the, to the edge of the road, but it went right through. So the, the stoplights were out, the blinking lights, stop signs, the driver's honking. They didn't stop. And it was shocking to me. I was like, I can't, I mean, you can hear the horn no matter what. And clearly, they knew what they were doing because they had pulled over. So the next day I asked Chris Hortsman, I said, Chris, is that? And he said, every day. I'm like, no, you mean, you mean once a week, once, once or twice a month, because every day, every day. So it's around a hundred and eighty times a year that our buses have someone drive through a clearly marked stop sign. Right? And, and the lights on. And to me, that is, that's something we need to talk about. And that's why I put this up there. So, you know, when you're talking to people from whatever, from October through January, we have a number of opportunities to be with family members in larger settings, start talking about this. And what's on here now, this happened a month ago in terms of Ladira Velazquez, who's the assistant director, cut this public service announcement. So I thought we'd play it. And let, you know, my story is just one of a hundred and eighty times a year that this happens. Some of you might have heard, Robert. So just a final, a final statement on that. We do, when possible, take the license plate number and we send it to the state. And the law was changed a few years ago, it's my understanding, there's an automatic ticket that goes out. Before, the bus driver had to testify that they could identify who was driving the car. And now it's just a ticket goes to the owner of the car. And if, you know, if they have a defense that it was stolen or something, they can, or if they want to say my, you know, my neighbor took it and give the ticket to him or her, then that can happen. But a ticket automatically goes out, I also understand that they're way, way behind on it. So if our school is any indication, a hundred and eighty times, you know, and you multiply that by seven hundred districts, some are bigger, some are smaller, but this is, this is a major issue. And it's just a matter of time before there's something bad that happens. All right. Oh, can you, yeah, can you go back one, I'm sorry. All right, so obviously, safety is priority number one at Transportation. And I wanted just to mention, we have, all of our drivers have commercial driver's license with Class B, passenger and school bus endorsements. And we have also eleven drivers that are nineteen A certified, that's the next step up. They are well-trained and well-versed in all the safety measures for the state. So they get certified and they actually do the training for our drivers as well as folks who come in with, some folks come in without even a permit to drive a school bus. So we start them through a training session, for those folks, it takes usually a minimum of three months, usually a little bit more. The test to pass the New York State CDL for bus drivers grew substantially harder just before COVID hit. And so we noticed a big decrease in folks who passed it on the first time. But we stick with folks and we get them, we get them there and we're working hard for that. Year-long safety training has been implemented, we do monthly training sessions. We also do weekly in, in drivers' mailboxes, just little updates and memos on what we've noticed during the week. Last week, I think, was speed within a residential zone, thirty might seem like it's, it's the posted speed limit, but when you're in a bus, that's a little too fast for residential zones. There's, you know, just to give you a sense, there's like a long pre-trip inspection in the morning of the bus. Everything from obviously air brakes and lights and hoses and the whole nine yards. But there's also each driver, the keys are centrally located and controlled. So each driver, you know, if they're sunny out, they have to take their sunglasses off, they have to speak to the person who hands in the keys so that that person's trained to see if there's any, you know, anything going on there. And we do randomized drug tests three to five times a year, so. Just want to make sure I hit everything, oh, drivers and bus aides. So what, again, my time down there, more so than in the last fifteen years combined, probably. It was really wonderful to see drivers and aides speaking about safety concerns every day in conversations, they, they self-regulate. And a lot of them really want to work with their colleagues, you know, off the record. If they see them do something that's unsafe, I've seen them come in and say, hey, you know, this is why you shouldn't be doing that, and it's well received. And so it's, it's fantastic to see that. All right. So our routes, I was surprised, we, we travel, our buses travel one million three hundred thousand miles a year. That's a minimum, they actually think it's closer to one point four, but I said, don't, don't spend time trying to get it. One point three million miles, that for those, you know, it's fifty-two or fifty-three trips around the diameter of the earth. And we have sixty-three standard routes, what I mean by standard routes is they run every morning and every afternoon, right? They're the routes that take, pick up kids up at home, drop them off at the end of the day. But there are also midday routes, there's shuttle buses going from the high school to LCS and back and forth, Bosie's back and forth. There's field trips, there's fine performing arts, there's athletics at the end of the day. There's McKinney Vento, which Dr. Bryman gave a presentation on a few meetings ago. So we have two or three drivers every day who are just doing McKinney Vento runs. And that's important when we start to talk about like how we can cover things like the shuttle LCS and after-school programs, and we'll, we'll get to that coming up. And we transport roughly three thousand students in the morning and three thousand students in the afternoon. Obviously, a shout out to the maintenance folks, there are three mechanics and one fleet manager who's this, you know, working mechanic. So we have four mechanics for, you know, eighty buses that travel one point three mile, million miles a year. It's a lot of oil, a lot of tire changes, a lot of work, and they do it well, and so shout out to them. It also takes a lot of fuel, that's just a sort of a segue if we wanted to talk about electric buses. Obviously, that's going to be a presentation in and of itself, how we move forward with that. In any event, whether we have electric buses or whether we do diesel or propane or a combination of all three of those, is going to be more and more important as the price of buses increases to increase the useful life. We used to have essentially a gravel parking lot up there. And if you understand when gravel gets wet, it, it allows the water to evaporate back up. If you park the buses on there for, you know, eight or ten hours a day, the undercarriage over years starts to get rusty. And, you know, the board, I think two or three years ago, put in multi-millions of dollars into a parking lot. But that in and of itself helped us, will help us extend life, the life of of our buses. And a workable washing bay is essential to it, to, to get the salt off during the winter. So that's something moving forward, we'll have to pay attention to. All right, special needs transportation. I just wanted to put this up here so that you can see how many different things are related to special needs transportation. There's a hundred and twenty-six students in our district who have at least one of these on, on their IEPs. And it typically is IEP-driven, almost, almost extends, almost a hundred percent IEP-driven. Some students have two or more of these things, so it's a lot to coordinate, and I think I just wanted to give a sense to the board. I was surprised this year when I learned how many individualized items there were in this. Take a quick look at that. And our colleagues, so the search is on for a new director. Lidera Velazquez and I today finalized the posting and the advertisement, it should be up tomorrow. If it's not up already, we will engage, I've already engaged with transportation staff, all of them. We've had three meetings where they indicated to myself what they're looking for in a director. And a lot of it was things that we, we could anticipate. So we built that into the advertising and, and into the posting. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about is like, let me go down to the bottom of this. We have eighty-five budgeted drivers. I've been here fifteen years, we've never had eighty-five drivers. I think when I got here, there were like eighty, and it's gone down from that. There's currently seventy-two drivers on the roster. But there's a number of drivers who are on long-term medical leaves, et cetera. So there's sixty-three standard routes, that does not leave a lot of folks to cover routes of drivers who call in sick. Friday was somewhat of an anomaly, but we had seventeen drivers on Friday calling. And when that happens, everything gets backed up. You know, we have office staff who aren't typically driving and certainly not, are familiar with the route. And it just takes longer, and so when we have, when we have that many folks absent, it backs up really quickly. What we would like to have is at least seventy-five to eighty drivers. Then, given, you know, the ebb and flow of sick days, with seventy-five or eighty drivers, on most days, we can cover our existing routes and do things better like get after-school programs routes. Again, when you have seventeen people out, those are the first things that will be cut that day, but the contract that you all, most of you who are here, board members supported two years ago, really helped in increasing the number of bus drivers. The union agrees with that, we see it, bus drives, bus drivers have said it. So that was a really important factor, it can't be understated how important that contract was to re-energizing our ability to get drivers in and drivers to stay. You know, we, we compete with teachers with other essentially public school districts up in this region. But for drivers, we're competing not only with school districts, we're competing with UPS, FedEx, other private carriers and other private bus companies too. So we'll keep plugging away. Interesting to note of our seventy-two drivers, the average age is fifty-three. A lot of folks use that as a second career. But I'm telling you, with the contract we have, I want to get people interested in bus driving as their career, right? Because you can earn a decent living, has a great pension system. As we saw in the audit, our pension funds are essentially fully funded in New York. And great health insurance benefits. So as you're talking to folks over the, over the breaks and holidays coming up, talk to them about not, you know, paying attention to the school lights, bus lights. And also, if anyone knows of drivers, we train. It's a great training program, it's probably one of the best in, it's certainly one of the best in the region, if not the state with our, our nineteen A drivers. And we stick with people, you don't have to pass on the first time, and it's, you know, it's a great place to work. I think. I think that's it, you cut my thank you slide out, that's okay. So thank you, thank you so much to the people who do the work every day. Most of them are probably in bed right now because they get up so early to be on their first runs. But if they watch us or if they hear about it, I really do. And I tell them all the time, you know, the executive team and the board really do appreciate what they do. And they appreciate that you appreciate them. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, but first I want to say that I had the, the pleasure of interacting in a number of ways with Chris Horstman. And I'm glad that you gave him the shout out that he richly deserves. He left us for a while and I was really disappointed when he did that. And I just really glad he's back because he's really tremendous. So questions, one is, so a timeline for hiring a director, you?
We'll probably, we'll probably have one in place by by November fifteenth, November thirtieth, depending on, you know, if we choose internal or external.
Now, so the Director of Transportation is part of the IPDA, no?
No, it's a, it's a, it's part of the confidential management team, so they, they don't have a contract, it's by resolution of the board.
Okay, and I'm, I'm surprised it's, that it's not salary, it's, it's an hourly job?
No, it's salary.
Or the hourly rate might refer to
Oh, that's for drive, that's for driving.
Oh, oh, yeah, I got it, okay, thank you, yes. It's for drivers, yes, because direct, right. And then on bus aides, do all of the buses have a bus aide or no? Just elementary?
Uh, no, there, there can be buses, there can be aides that are IEP-driven. Right, and then there are some aides that, when a bus is really full and it's all full every day, there's usually a bus aide on it just to help, help kids get on and off and, you know, keep them motivated.
But all elementary buses do have an aide or?
You know, when you say all, I don't know, I don't want to say all because I don't know that for sure, to be honest with you. I don't know. I will add, because I know Sean has brought it up in the past, we have a number of routes with kids on for over two hours. And so when we reach that magic number of seventy-five, eighty bus drivers, those are the first that are going to get split and new drivers on them. There's just, there's no way, like the LCS shuttle, for example, we, we have sliced and diced that a hundred different ways. And we are down to, this is it, you're going to get there and it's going to be eight or nine minutes late. And that's it, however, every LCS student can be to school on time. It would require them, though, to ride an earlier bus. It may come to their home forty-five, fifty minutes earlier. So there are decisions that have to be made in terms of that. And that's the last shuttle that's late, there are other, there are like three shuttles that go up there every five minutes they're leaving from the high school. So that's the last shuttle that takes the folks over there at the last moment.
So you said we have a number of buses where kids are on for two hours?
Is that mostly McKinney Vento or? No, it's, you know, if you I'm, I'm happy to come back to talk more about certain aspect of these things and dive in deeper. But if you see the map of the routes, some of them, some of them go quite a ways up the lake on the other side. Which I was, when I first saw that, I was, wow, we, that's our district way up there. And then way out past Caroline and, you know, so there are a number of routes that just are long. They're just really quite long with not a lot of students on them sometimes.
So you mentioned that we have seventy-two on the roster this year, do you know how that compares to last year?
Uh, I, I mean, it, it's better than last year, I do, I don't have the number from last year in my head, but it's definitely better. Yeah, yeah, we're making progress every year. And the, so the average age is, what did I say, fifty-three, just under fifty-three. Interestingly, the average number of years of a driver with us is, is under ten. Since it's a little over eight, if I remember correctly. So there's that, there's a lot of folks who are using this as a second career. You know, again, I want to try to get them to understand, folks to understand, this could be your career, right?
Additional questions, folks?
I just, I'm not sure if you might not know this, but just, it's, it's not just that last one that's late. I've gotten on the first shuttle and it's still arrived five minutes late to school. And today, it's not just ten, eight to ten minutes, it was almost twenty, the last shuttle today was almost twenty minutes late. That is almost half a first period.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yes, uh, another, uh, conversation that, uh, involves communication and also privacy issues, but I, I know GPS is a private way to communicate with students about where the buses are.
Yeah.
Uh, whether they've missed the bus, the bus was late and so on, but not very aware that it was, you have security box concerns. So it can be, so you could add that at some point as another conversation and how that, how that is communicated to students.
Yeah. Uh, the new system we, I spoke about, um, I think in the second semester of this year, we're gonna have the GPS part of it up and running. So parents, caregivers, students can log onto the app and see where their bus is at any given moment. We can currently see that internally on, on our side of the system, but we'll, we'll open that up to everyone else.
Please. Microphone.
Um, I would just like to bring up another issue and please understand that I have all the understanding and grace in the world. And I know that running sixty-three bus routes with sometimes a shortage of drivers is probably a complicated mind maze of trying to figure out where to send people. But another issue that I also experienced this morning was my friend, her bus came a good seven minutes early. So she missed it and her parents couldn't pick her up. So I picked her up and she owes me coffee for that, but it did get me thinking, would it be possible to send out a potential time range of like, it's very close to the minute, like your bus will be here at eight twenty-three or eight twenty-four, eight twenty-five. Could, would it be possible to send out a range? Your bus may be here from eight oh five to eight fifteen. Try to get there around eight oh four to also account for differences in, you know, when there's a substitute driver or something like that.
Yeah.
It was just a thought I had. Thanks.
No, it's a great thought. And we, we actually, um, counsel our drivers if they see that they're early to stop and wait until the time reaches where, the time reaches up to them, then proceed. Being early is not helpful for a bus route, right? So I don't, I don't know your particular of what happened. Maybe it was, uh, a, you know, someone from the office who was driving this morning. I just don't know, but we, and I know this has happened because I've heard the conversation with drivers, like, don't be early. If you're early, stop, pull over, wait and, and allow time to catch up with you. And then the GPS system will really help too. Yeah, but thank you.
Adam, I said one, one question.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe just more of a reaction. That's not really a criticism, just, I'm just feeling it. The, the two-hour trip that some people have to take twice a day, four hours on a bus. I guess I was just wondering a little bit about, like, to me, it feels over the line. I mean, how did it get decided that two hours each way was okay? Cause like, let's say it was three hours each way and then everybody would say, no, that's obviously way too much. Like what, how does two hours make it? What's, where's the, where's the cutoff of, like, this is outrageous, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I I have what I believe to be the answer, so let me couch it in that terms. And like you, Adam, when I discovered there were multiple routes that were two hours, I'm like, you, this just can't happen. You have to do. And so the reasons were, were given to me, I think were legitimate. And I'm not going to do them justice right now in the moment, but, um, it's, it's the number of students that have to be picked up on other routes. We had, we, interestingly, we had a number of buses that were over full um, at the beginning of the year because more students decided to ride than was anticipated, right? And so it's a, it's a balancing act between, you know, buses that are at capacity being sent on shorter routes to pick up kids and buses that have to go further route. But they know in no uncertain terms, Chris, who's really good, uh, the dispatcher, the router, et cetera. I'm like, whatever you do, this has got to be the number one issue after safety. Um, two hours is way too long. And so I, you know, we will update you and if, if it, you know, if I'm hoping, obviously we have six, we have six, uh, driver trainees. And if they all pass and, or even if four or five of them, the next people that get their routes are gonna be split. Those routes are gonna be split and short.
And at that time, correct my wrong story, at that time, this question came up then. And I remember.
Coming from a countywide district in Albemarle County, I shouldn't have said the name. But where I'm from in Virginia, the longest route was around two hours and some change then. And we were working to make that much shorter. And we had many routes then, not just a few like we have here. And the board at the time made some decisions with us to say we'd wanted no route more than ninety minutes. And asked me to come back with the budgetary implications for that. And we did. Now that's been a long time ago and it was a significant budgetary issue that frankly, we still, even with the funding, was not able to adjust much. And as we hear today, thirteen years later, that number has increased. So this is an issue and it's always been something that the board has had on its radar. Please note to adjust it significantly, it will require in budgetary commitments. And unlike then staffing, which we weren't dealing with staffing issues like we are today. So I just want to make sure folks know that we've been having this conversation. And there are other districts with a similar geographic area that have significant bus rides like ours here too.
So to respond to that, this is not, um, this doesn't answer Adam's question because I have a child that is one of the people that are on about seventy-five, ninety minutes, one way, depending on the route, right? And so this is part of why it's come up for me. Um, at that time, we had that conversation. We also had a conversation about what was the uh, appropriate amount of distance that we would expect folks to walk, right? So one solution is to say, okay, you can walk two miles. And therefore we have more bus drivers available to do other routes. I'm not certain that's the way in which our community wants to go. I'm aware and I'm sure my board colleagues are as well, of a number of districts throughout New York State who've had to close down for a day because they cannot provide enough transportation. That has happened with great regularity. This is a national shortage and I'm trying to be, um, as, uh, respectful to the experience of being late and honoring, um, the difficulty of being a bus driver. And while, while we've increased pay, without question, uh, we've tried to find other solutions. Um, I'm able to have some conversations with folks as well and it can be a difficult position to have. To be about safety first with thirty young people behind you acting the way in which thirty young people do. And that's just being real. So it is a, it is a, um, a serious consideration for us to feel about how we, uh, will try to solve this. And what we can do. There are options out there, but there are um, definitely some of the things to do. And other folks have even talked about going private, right? But even that creates a whole set of other circumstances and none of, one of which, which is New York State Ed Ball about how you can make that happen. So we probably do need another conversation that gets us a little bit more into the details. I think having people see some of the maps may give a little bit of intricacies. I say it to folks all the time to my student teachers of Ithaca College. There are more than twenty-seven miles between our two elementary schools. Um, and that's within this school district, right? So we're trying to traverse that amount of space and time. Including dropping folks off, picking folks up. A number of folks who may even ask for transportation that actually don't show up for transportation is also something that we have to have some conversation about. So, yeah, um, I, I feel this one personally. Um, and, you know, I've tried to figure out, like, what do I, like, do I give you iPad? Like, what do I give you for this, this time period, right? Especially at age eight, right? How do we negotiate this? So.
Can you drive the kid to school, Sean?
Yeah, well, that's, trust me, my wife thinks it's actually good for her. We have different perspectives on, on that. Uh, but to your point, Joe, it's difficult to drive someone to work when you also have work.
Yeah.
Right? For driving to school. So if this is the want of the board, we can ask for this to be brought back up and start thinking about creative solutions. But I think that Dr. Brown's point, also understanding that it will come with, have financial implications, no matter what direction we do. And that's presuming we can even find additional folks. And if folks are driving across the city, you see it. If you leave the city, big signs, we're looking for bus drivers, right? You drive by the tennis courts. There, there's, there's no doubt that folks have been active. So to Bob and to Zach and to Glitter, thank you for the recruitment as well.
Yeah.
Um, but I agree, this is a, an issue that we have to pay attention to. And for our board members, that's above and beyond trying to think about providing transportation to any place else. That's why we were having some of that conversation as well. We can even consider that if we're, we got babies on for ninety minutes.
Yeah, it's too long. And that's right. It's two hours, the ones I was worried about. There's a whole bunch that are ninety minutes too. Um, and it is exacerbated in the afternoon runs. There are more two-hour runs getting kids home than there are in the morning. You know, um, and then I, uh, to, to Sean's point, uh, there's a billboard outside of town. A driver for a soft, um, a, a beverage company. Which I won't name, so I don't want anyone to go to it, uh, starting eighty-one thousand dollars to drive a soda truck. That's what we're up against. And now, you know, with the shopping season, Amazon.
UPS.
UPS.
Post office, UPS.
So this would probably be a good brainstorming, what some people in my world call dreamstorming session for us to think about how to come up with some creative solutions and look and see what some other school districts and communities have done. To the students, what I want to say is, um, please know we're aware, like, this is, uh, this is one of the key issues that we, I get emails about. Um, we're aware that this is a, a concern and we're working diligently and we have a great team that's doing everything they possibly can. But if you can imagine going from seventy-two to fifty-five in a day, trying to reduce sixty-four routes, that, that gets a little difficult.
It's a, it's a little hectic.
Yeah.
And just to reiterate, I, I, the, everyone at transportation from the temporary, uh, you know, day-to-day leader, uh, Chris Horstman, uh, to the drivers, they want to get you on time to school. Um, and, and we'll continue to work on it. So thank you for holding us to task too.
So if it's the want of the board, I'll call up with Dr. Brown and more. We'll try to figure out when is a good time to come back and give us some time for some additional details. Let this school year settle in a little bit more as well. Has that worked out right now? Is that fun?
Good idea. And if it's helpful, I know that at least one elementary school is trying to work on creative solutions for after-school program rides. That, that they're reaching out to the community. They're having people sign up there. I just got an email today. Can you give somebody a ride on Mondays for seven weeks? Like, so anything that we can do to come up with creative solutions would be fantastic.
Within New York State regulations.
Within the new, and so I know after-school is different than primary transportation to school, but just, the community is, is, is ready. Yeah.
Great. One last, one last comment, please.
Sorry to interject, sorry to interject, but I just wanted to ask a quick question. If we're getting bus rides that are two hours all the way up to near the top of Kewa Lake, my confusion is just, aren't there, there have to be a bunch of other school districts between us and them. Why is it that we have such a wide reach?
Yeah, I'll have my answer, but you, you.
Yeah, it's not quite, uh, up to the top, but it's, it's a good ways up. I was surprised how far up the lake we go, for instance, and how far out, you know, twenty-seven miles between the two farthest elementary schools. Uh, you're the historian and the archivist, so I will go to you, but um, you know, school, there are a number of school districts in upstate New York that just cover large geographic regions. And it's probably, there's been a number of mergers over the years. I don't know if ICA, if ICSD ever merged in its history.
Absolutely.
To make it larger to, you know, and so you end up with these very large, um, large districts geographically.
The only thing I'd add, we have to remind ourselves that, um, what people always say, that Ithaca centrally isolated, right? There's, there's no major highway here. So if you're driving, you're usually driving on county roads. Uh, the bus that our grandchild takes, um, there aren't that many students on it, but there still are a number of stops. And so each stop takes time as well, right? So it's not even that there it's overwhelmed with students. But trying to get from to some schools, be it Caroline or Enfield, to wherever you may be going, may change what it looks like as well. So we can take a look at the map, uh, that's not gonna change that sort of set by district, right? But it, it's a much wider, um, region that we cover than most folks anticipate.
Okay, thank you.
Fantastic. We'll be back. Thank you very much, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, being mindful of the clock, will the board to keep, just keep going? Fantastic. Um, agenda item eleven point two, that's policy four, three, two, seven and four, three, two, seven dash R. We are not calling it AI. We are calling it alternative and homebound instruction. Thank you for joining us.
Alternate or homebound instruction, uh, following changes to state regulations on, on this topic and area. So as a means of summarizing, if I could, um, for the benefit of those maybe who weren't here last time, um, key changes include, uh, the use of gender neutral language throughout the, um, policy and regulation. Uh, a substantive change to the number of hours per week. So, uh, elementary students are, uh, eligible for receive, I should say, ten hours of tutoring or alternate instruction when they are not able to attend school. Um, and those at the secondary level will receive fifteen hours a week. So both rec- received an increase of five hours per week. Uh, additionally, the state is requiring parents or guardians to provide a release for the exchange of information in cases where the, um, the, uh, reason for student not being able to attend is based on a medical or mental health concern. Additionally, they've, um, outlined that a parent or guardian could ask for reduced hours. So if a student at the elementary level can't do the ten hours or fifteen hours, um, that we get documentation from the treating provider, whether it's a mental health or, or a medical practitioner as to why, um, they can't receive that many hours. Um, and then the referrals, uh, may make, I think, more explicit here, how people can refer, receive alternative instruction. It can come from the parent guardian, um, through a staff member, a social worker, a school counselor, any of the school personnel, and certainly for disciplinary reasons, uh, through the district office.
So some other changes, to summarize really quickly, um, tutoring can be provided to students home, hospital setting, uh, public facility. Um, at a mutually convenient time, we spoke about how we were adding virtual as well. Um, it can be provided for disciplinary reasons during suspension. Um, we added language about assigning the tutor, the tutor within forty-eight hours of the suspension, within five school days of notification, um, or within five school days, uh, from the parent guardian's request. Uh, we talked, you know, we added that the, uh, school counselor of the secondary level is gonna be the point person. Um, the teacher at the elementary s- school level will be the point person, um, who will get um, gather, uh, instructional materials. We also shared that we've worked to streamline the process. Uh, we had process where the tutor provides the, um, instruction as well as documents, the time. Last time we were here, there were questions about compulsory age. Um, it's, um, six to sixteen. We consult with our attorney as well about some of the language that you all had questions about. She felt like the language should stay in and that our district is, um, although it's not a requirement to provide outside of the compulsory age, as a district, we're making every effort to support each other.
Questions or comments from board members?
So I got a, a couple of questions, um, and I wasn't here at the last policy meeting. Um, so a compulsory age, so we're not required to provide alternate instruction, uh, if a student is over sixteen.
Right. Or four.
Or five.
Yeah.
Um, but we do, or, yeah, I mean, we do for everybody or?
At the discretion of the board or the district, excuse me.
At, at the discretion of the district. Um, and I, I mean, there's a paragraph in here that uh, un- under the regulation, uh, education law provides that upon suspending a student who is under the compulsory attendant age six, the school district must take immediate steps to provide that student with alternate instruction. I, I'm confused about that.
It's really, it's, it's, so just to clarify, it's the top end of thresholds. So students who are above. So students who are above the compulsory age, it falls to the discretion of the district, those who are below, particularly in cases of suspension, we are required to.
But I think more before you go on to that point, I wasn't sure if that was a typo or not, the way in which it was written in the policy says sixteen, and then the way it's written in the regulation, education law provides that suspending a student who is under the compulsory age of attendance. And I wasn't sure if that meant to be sixteen or six.
Well, it, it, it does say six years of age.
I understand.
In, yeah, okay.
And but up above. Similar, it also says sixteen. Well, I, I, yeah, I just wanted to know if, if, what we were talking about, so I had it marked as well, that's why I wanted to, didn't want to walk away.
And another question I have relative to suspension, uh, do we provide it for a single day of suspension, or is there a threshold of a number of days? There's no mention of that in the, the policy.
Yeah, um, we per, we, we tried to provide it for as, as many days as has happened. So even for, um, when I was elementary principal, if there was a one or two day suspension, I work with Jeff Bieber. Tried to do our best to find, um, a tutor for those two days. Obviously, that should turn around some.
My, my other board members, two or three small edits for me. If we go back to our good communication folk and the style guide. There are times where district medical directors capitalized, or superintendent of schools capitalized. And I thought we had an agreement that we're going to put all that in lowercase moving forward, and that happens a couple of times, and I'm happy to send you my notes as well. Um, I did have a question about the page two, the alternate instruction for disciplinary reasons about the age, if it's six or if it's sixteen. Um, and then there was one other, oh, and then we, um, in the location section was at page three. Tutoring for students will be provided in the student's home, hospital setting, or public facility. I did, I thought we had agreed that we were going to add or virtual or something that references virtual. And if we can add, i- if, I just want to also make sure that's within keeping with New York state regulations as well.
It is, and we're actually looking at, um, virtual resources.
So then I, I would recommend that it's in the policy, so parents and caregivers know that that's an option for them to choose as well. But beyond that, um, you all did answer the questions that we had at the policy committee, right, Katie, Katie? And if you were there too, right? Um, but the, the redone policy answered all of my questions, it was just those couple of small edits. Yes.
Full embarrassments, but it's okay. Um, so I know that, like, sometimes if a person has a medical condition, they'll be treated in a hospital outside of New York state. For example, in Boston, in Chicago, Atlanta, a couple of places in Texas I've heard of. And I know that for certain fields, you can't do virtual, um, meetings or virtual visits with people outside of the state. So for a person, for a student getting like the medical treatment in a different state, would the virtual tutoring options still be maybe possible? Thanks.
That's a wonderful question, and most definitely it is. What we find, um, particularly institutions that, uh, have pediatric units or wards, they often have, um, in-house, uh, support around education. And so what we end up doing is being a liaison with that point person in a hospital or other inpatient facility. Um, but certainly, we can provide virtual support, uh, virtual tutoring, tutoring, alternative structures to kids who, regardless of where they are in the country.
We're working with a company called Full Mind Learning, um, that provides virtual certified teachers in all areas. Um, and we're going to start, um, working with them in a small way, but that would be one of our tools that we could use in a situation like that.
Additional questions, comments from board? And we entertain, we, this read, this policy is up for a second reading and adoption. Can we entertain a motion with the noted changes?
Uh, I move, uh, the, uh, policy, alternative homebound instruction, policy forty-three, twenty-seven, and regulation twenty-three, twenty-seven R. Um, for a second reading and adoption with the noted edits.
Second.
Moved by Morris, second by Adam. Additional discussion or compensation? All in favor, yeah, sorry, Eric. Yeah, it's the final version, if we could just like try to, there's a couple of orphans and where the title, the title is one page and then the text is another, if we try to patch it. These, just so they read them up there.
No problem.
There's some headers. Still header on one page and the text on the other. Would that go to change as well? So first, second, all in favor? That is everybody who was present. Fantastic. Thank you. That was on to policy five, five, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, move us to policy five, five, zero, zero, protection of privacy records, also up for a second reading and adoption this evening. Katie is joining us.
Hello again. Um, so we are looking at policy fifty-five hundred, um, so the major change, um, to this policy would be to um, add language that would change our media clearance from an opt-in to an opt-out. Um, we've also, uh, the policy as it stands makes reference to the No Child Left Behind Act, which has now been replaced with the Every Child, Every Student Succeeds Act. So those references have been changed. Um, we've also gone through and updated, um, grammatical errors and preferences. Um, and also made sure we were using gender-affirming language as well.
Questions from board members? Well, then I will jump in with my couple of quick questions, uh, of the policy. I'm looking at page three. Where it says release of directory information and information to military recruiters. Um, the way in which I read that section was two distinct, different paragraphs. Um, one is about the release of directory information, and then one is about the release of information to military recruiters. And didn't know if we should separate those two to make it a little bit more clear about what we were talking about. And I don't know if folks see what I'm referencing or not. So the first half of that paragraph is about release of directory information. The second half of that paragraph is about release to military recruiters in keeping with FERPA and ESSA. So I, I would recommend just add a second header for the second half of that paragraph, when you talk about this information to military.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Fantastic. And I continue to have questions about our disclosure of student disciplinary records to law enforcement officials. And it's not whether or not we disclose information to law enforcement officials, it's the way in which it's written. It says, as, I'm on page three still, the bottom, the very bottom of page three. This is act, as authorized by FERPA, information in quotes, that is not obtained from a student, records in quotes. Regarding misconduct committed by a student on school grounds or a school sponsored function may be shared with official law enforcement. The in quotes makes me, I don't know what we're referring to. Can you say in for, I can share information makes it seem, I don't know what it makes it seem.
Like a double entendre or something.
I did read that.
Right, so referring to a glossary somewhere where information is defined.
Webster defines information as, yeah. Um, so I was, I was reading that, um, and trying to interpret it a couple of times. Katie asked me to pop in, I'm Lily Talke, Deputy Superintendent. Um, and, uh, and it appears that the, the intention, as you read the elements that, uh, come after that, um, is that if there's, if there's some sort of common knowledge, or there's, there's something that's out there, there, you know, multiple videos of a student doing X, Y, or Z, um, that that might be the type of quote-unquote information. Um, if we, if we want to, what we could do is we could run it, run it actually through NISBA. Um, and make sure that it's, it's aligned with their boilerplate, um, policies. We could also run it through, uh, legal as well. I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last policy meeting, um, otherwise I would have done that in advance. Um, but, you know, I think the, in general, uh, we are very tight um, in keeping with the law around sharing student information with law enforcement or anyone. Um, and so even quote-unquote information, if there's some sort of well-known thing that a student engaged in, um, you know, we still, unless the child is reasonably suspected to be a danger to themselves or others, or, uh, if we have a subpoena or a warrant, right? We don't, we just don't provide that information.
I would have a hard time voting for a policy that says I can share information above and beyond your record. And I, for those who can't see, I'm using air quotes because that's what the, the language is. I would prefer a run through NISBA or through BSK, just to make sure. Um, and I know for, for the most part, if I'm understanding correctly, it's not going to radically change what we're doing this year. So we're just trying to keep up with our practice. So that's one thing, and I have one more last thing, but then we'll stop and see how board members respond to that.
One response is, does the phrase may assage any concerns you have? Says may, it doesn't say will, it doesn't say shall, it says may, which leaves a lot of discretion. To this, um, group is executives who we think have children first, but it could easily shift under another administration.
Yeah, and I actually feel okay if we just remove the quotes, like.
Yeah. Insinuate some sort of e- additional meaning that we're obviously not clear on.
There's also a legal difference between an educational record and any kind of other information for young people. Um, so an educational record would be, uh, say if there is video footage from our cameras on campus that capture a student engaging in something that violates the Unified Code of Conduct, right? And we utilize that for some sort of disciplinary referral, or even for a restorative experience. Um, if it's part of the child's record, right, that's an educational record. Grades are an educational record, right? There are a number of things that are legally within that umbrella. Um, and so again, my presumption is information is like anything that isn't that, right? Yeah.
Um, this just in, Kristen from BSA, BSK responded. Um, and she said, I think they are trying to distinguish between information gleaned from student records, information and records as defined by FERPA. Um, so that would require parental consent, consent to disclose with information gathered from other sources that would not require consent before disclosure.
So thank you for that, but also that makes me even more, um, hesitant. Makes it seem like I can engage in hearsay.
Right.
Law enforcement, and that, I would hope that we're not engaging that. To Elvis' point, the idea of may, right? That we have folks, um, who may not do that, but we're not writing policy or current people writing policy as a good practice. So I don't know if there's a solution, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to think it out.
I'm sure there is. Let's bring it back to policy. The words may, should, can, must. Those are all very special words in, in the eyes of New York state and law. Um, and I think if we want to center children, let's be really thoughtful about it.
I would support that, other board members.
It's, it's, I, I understand your, Sean is a historian, he's, he's looking five hundred years down the road. Unless you're leaving as it is, resolves that, so maybe we ask Kate about the parentheses.
Mm-hmm.
Right, at least one hundred. Yes. Trying to make it to a hundred. Uh, yeah, so I, I would, I would recommend that we, um, would uh, send it back to policy, just to be thoughtful about it, that is okay by the course. The last question I have, given that there is some fairly specific information in this policy that we have, that we as being the school district have the right to release is how well-known will the communication be that parents or caregivers can opt out? So similar to what I think one of the students asked, or maybe it was Adam about the survey, like, can we get another email? Like, if it's buried in the, the packet that I received with fifty-five other pages in being a school year, and I don't know I have the right to say, no, you can't share my child's height because I'm a sports team, or, no, you can't share whatever it may be. Um, I, I'm just curious about what our process is to make sure that parents and caregivers know that they have the right to opt out, should they choose.
Um, yeah, and we can certainly, so when this passes, or if it does, um, we will go back and make sure that that noted change and give the same amount of time that we gave when it was first sent out to opt out. Um, and certainly, moving forward, we can do it as a singular communication.
That would be great.
And probably not on TikTok, Katie, but maybe more like Facebook or something like that.
I don't even social, it's fine.
Fantastic. Thank you both very much. More good luck at policy committee, let me know how it works. Uh, we will continue with our agenda. Um, agenda's eleven point four, the jewel settlement agreement. We have, um, moved it from a voting item to a discussion item, just to give us some information about what we'll be voting on. Um, and what we're asking, what we're asking. And I know we had some conversation about it, but folks may not remember that conversation.
Yeah, so several months ago, Lily Talke, Deputy Superintendent again. Uh, so several months ago, we had the opportunity to take part and be one of the school districts as a part of a class action law school, lawsuit against the Jewel Vape Pen Company, right? Um, and, uh, Dr. Brown mentioned it in public session, gosh, uh, months ago. Um, and so the school district participated in this with a number of other school districts. And ultimately will be awarded around eighty-two hundred dollars as part of this settlement. Um, the board does have to vote on this before November thirtieth of this year in order to receive the, um, the money.
And, and re- for eighty-two hundred dollars, what are we agreeing to give up?
Um, the, the right to sue them again.
If this is, if this is manna from heaven, then we weren't pursuing anything, we should not look a gift horse in the mouth, and we should decide what to do with eighty-two hundred dollars. And as far as I know, we weren't pursuing anything in this regard.
Attorney's, uh, attorney's stuff to us with this option.
And I would, yeah, they reached out to all of their school districts that they work with.
All right, let me put it another way. Has anybody at this table heard of a conversation from our superintendent, our administrators about significant problems we've been having with vaping in this school district? I do not recall.
I, I don't know. Captain, you're helping us break protocol, and now every time someone speaks, I have to figure out whether or not I should break the process and let them speak from the floor. So I'm less worried about you than how it's such a precedent for other folks as well, so we'll, we'll make an allowance.
I'm just wondering if speaking with the teacher at IHS in LACS might give you a different perspective on how you can discern those who may be.
Or speaking with folks at Pointon or Dewey.
I would say are any secondary school in the United States of America?
We have not had a conversation about that at this table.
So I guess my point is, so not to take it off track, right? We moved this from an act item to a discussion item to make sure that we can at least have the proper information. We will bring it back at the next meeting for a voting item, but I want to make sure folks will be able to have their questions answered, right? It's a relatively quote-unquote small amount of money, but it's part of a class action law, right? Any additional discussion from?
I guess one of the key questions would be. Uh, I guess one of the key questions would be to ask Kate, what have districts done who decided to opt out of the class action?
Are they pursuing independent legislation or?
A lawsuit.
Yeah, a lawsuit or not. And a quick question. So in the last paragraph, starting with now therefore, is referring to um, the actual settlement, a copy of which is incorporated into the minutes of this meeting? The document that comes up is just one page.
Oh, apologies. There's an actual document.
Longer document than we, okay.
Make sure to send that out.
Okay. Yeah, but let me double check.
No, you were correct, Katie, actually, yeah.
Just double checking, I'm actually logged in.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we'll get the longer settlement, we'll ask our legal team the question. We will have continued ongoing conversations about the problems that students have expressed to us quite clearly with vaping happening in all of our, many of our schools, but all of our secondary schools, and we'll proceed. Is that okay by board members? Yes, students, you have anything to? Okay. Fantastic, fantastic. Next item. We'll keep moving with our agenda. We are almost done.
I think there was one comment.
Yes, I'm sorry, did I skip over someone?
No, but.
So I, um, I just think it's important that I've seen administrators do this and handle this very gracefully. But I think it's important that we also at a policy level understand that students who very, really take time, like, out of class today, they're not bad people. They've just been influenced by a very bad thing. And I think that our discipline policies and our general policies, obviously, it's not something that the school district should support because it has health issues for them and for others, but we need to, well, I think we should, um, maintain kind and compassionate policies the way that we discipline this and just try to remember that it's kind of an addiction and we need to maybe not shame or punish or make people feel embarrassed for it. We just need to try to get everybody to hope that they. Okay, I can't understand.
Uh, I actually, I do agree with Lucine that it is an addiction and it cannot be treated necessarily as though every person who vapes in the school is some criminal, but I would argue that I know it's difficult from a legal perspective and I'm no lawyer and no policymaker or, or a board member, but I do think that one of the challenges with these kinds of suits is that if schools keep ceding to these companies' demands, the problem gets worse. Because these companies have so much money, they can dole out small amounts to every school district and still be fine and continue selling vapes to all their teenagers. So it, to me, it seems like we're asking the question of whether or not we sell out for a few dollars or we keep fighting a cause which could end up being costly and problematic. I don't have the numbers on that. I, of course, can't tell you what to do, but on the ground as a student, it does feel that there are real and significant concerns and just getting eight thousand dollars really isn't going to cut.
And I think that's the question for us to ask our legal team, um, because this is something that's already, and this has been settled, and so the question is whether or not we accept the funds or not accept the funds. Accepting the funds would prevent us from engaging in other lawsuits. And I also just want to recognize, thank you for your comment. Um, we are trying to be as restorative as possible, doesn't mean that we're always in that space. Uh, but I'm aware that this is a larger conversation that we've been having in other areas and we also have to recognize that when many of us are using the word vape, we're, we're, we may be speaking about multiple forms of vaping. Some with illegal substances, some with nicotine, like Juul cigarettes, right? And as Dr. Brown said a couple of months ago, this is, this conversation about smoking or vaping in school has been around for seventy, eighty years, right? About what does it mean? And so it's a thing that folks have been trying very in a difficult way to solve. And so it does render for us to have more conversation and more discussion. Mr. Harris, I saw you grabbing the mic. Should I keep it moving?
Uh, yes, but your point is very well taken. We should also scan to see what the primary bullet points were in the settlement. Sentiments like that normally say you can't do X within X feet of a school. You can't sell Y within Y feet. So I'm sure to get a, you know, two hundred fifty million dollar settlement, there were some pretty strong, um, incentives to the company, but we should investigate that as well.
Fantastic. Thank you all. Uh, next agenda item is eleven point five is committee updates.
What about, uh, the audit?
I thought we said eleven point six.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
So committee updates, um, I know we don't have all committee, uh, chair folks here, but if we do want to go through real quick, we can begin with curriculum instruction and, um, I say this, uh, with love and with patience, but we're mindful of time for updates for all chairs.
Okay.
That was not directed at you, Adam.
That's okay. No, I will be brief. Uh, at curriculum, we started a conversation about test scores in the district, um, which everyone agreed is one important outcome measure, not the only outcome measure, of course, uh, to consider the success of the, uh, implementation of the district's curriculum. Um, we talked about different types of data, large scale data, um, or satellite data like region scores, uh, medium scale, map data like the ICSD Equity Report Card, small scale or street data like student longitudinal and exit interviews and anti-marginal distinction in unit showcases. Um, so we started a conversation on that. Um, we also decided that we were gonna have um, the president of the ITA, Catherine Sernera, also have a spot on the weekly agenda so that we can officially, uh, check in with her without breaking policy of speaking to audience members and hear teachers' perspective on current, uh, discussions and topics.
Uh, see, I, I'll follow up. Thank you. Uh, finances.
Uh, yeah, we had a pretty in-depth conversation about our, um, revenues over the last decade or so, uh, we discussed, um, actual money coming in from taxpayers and the state and Title I, big bump that we received, um, to try and make us whole for COVID. We also discussed, uh, how our revenues have impacted our local taxpayers, uh, gave some really interesting data about how we compare to other school districts in the area and we compare very favorably in terms of our tax rate per thousand. Um, that was about it. Yeah, I think it was, I think it was well received. Thanks again for Amanda for making it clear.
Uh, Jill is not here, Karen is not here. I was not at facilities with anybody who's on the committee here. So we'll wait for it to go from Jill. Uh, HR?
Well, I missed the last meeting, um, and so, uh, I haven't got yet. Got enough to gotten an update on what happened, though I did, uh, I understand that there was some kind of discussion and some suggestion made in re- relating to APPR, uh, and tenure recommendations or tenure considerations. And, uh, so if somebody who was there could, uh, fill me in on that, um, so that I know what happened.
Um, well, we got a great update on vacancies from, um, Zach and Quadiara with a beautiful little handout. Um, I'll make a copy for you.
Okay.
Um, and then we did speak in executive session about, um, only what was written there, only about, uh, the tenure process. And so specifics, thank you, specifics, there was, um, we can, I would update you offline.
Okay.
Um, that was, it was vacancies and the tenure process.
Okay. Uh, all right.
Uh, I'll take the policy committee, even though it's Moira's committee, I was chairing that. We talked about the two policies discussed this evening as well as we tabled the sexual harassment policy, uh, until, uh, Deputy Superintendent Lily Talke has joined us for that conversation. And we had a conversation about the ICSD safety plan. We are moving forward with public announcements, uh, that will then require a public hearing, uh, that then will come to the board for adoption after the public hearing. The document will be posted up online as soon as the announcement is made, so we encourage folks to take a look at the announcement and I'm sure we can work with our communication team to get the draft out the post as soon as possible as well. Um, uh, advisory council, um, Adam, you were, and I didn't check it beforehand and prepared to get an update about the.
Sure. Uh, mental health advisory committee, we, uh, met, it's, it's very new, so we're still talking about the goals of the committee. Uh, we started a conversation about whether or not the mental health needs of the district are being met. And if we can use something called, um, SHAPE, which is the School Health Assessment and Performance, Performance Evaluation Tool, uh, to make that determination, our local BOCs is being trained to operate that type of districts. Um, we plan to engage, uh, communications team, um, to get the word out on, on mental health care opportunities. Uh, we're gonna look into what legislation might, um, appropriate funding for unmet mental health needs. And then we discussed, uh, some professional development, uh, that's dedicated for suicide prevention and how to start planning to develop a suicide prevention and response policy for the district.
Fantastic. Thank you greatly. And, uh, we have not got the legislative advocacy up and running, because it's not sufficiently a advisory council, but I know that Mr. Harris has been working with some folks to move some things on and start some conversations.
Yeah, we've had some, uh, pretty solid initial conversations about, uh, asking Anne Reichlin to lead our charge. And, uh, Erin made some, Erin Coyle made some really good uh, suggestions about how we can open that up so it's more transparent and more available to people with different, uh, schedules. And, uh, basically, I think the decision this time is to go as broad as possible so we can have as many people on the ground in different places as we need. I will, uh, make sure we actually have a meeting and get started as soon as possible.
Thank you for that. And I will, uh, withhold any update on the audit committee because it's the next agenda item. And so let's move to, uh, agenda item eleven point six and, uh, present the, the audit in front of, uh, the boards. Uh, as a quick, um, uh, background, the audit committee, uh, just met prior to the board meeting, um, elected, uh, Chris Malcom to be the chair of the audit committee or the chairperson of the audit committee. Uh, we heard, um, uh, about this year's audit, um, from Insero and, uh, the documents that were there. Uh, our timeline this year, um, was, uh, slightly different than it has been in previous years and different than what we expect in years moving forward. Um, and so, uh, board members got a chance to review the documents, um, earlier today. Uh, I will let the board know, um, it is on the agenda as an action item, but before we proceed any further, I just want to make sure folks know that we have a couple of options. One, we could hear another shortened version update where people can ask questions. And we can vote this evening with any noted changes that will get to us. The board has to vote by October fifteenth. Um, or we can, uh, continue to ask questions, look at the documents and then hold a special meeting between now and next Monday. Um, and it probably would end up being that Monday, uh, October fifteenth for an additional meeting if that's to be the, the will and law of the board. So let's see where folks are at so far, or anyone else who is at the audit committee that would like to share or add their perspective. No pressure. We can also ask Amanda to give us a short update as well.
I feel comfortable moving forward with the stipulation that we would be approving pending those notes of finalization. Um, but I would also understand if there were board members who wanted to read through all of the lovely documents that are attached to that agenda.
I, I would agree with Katie, having, you know, had the presentation and also having time to read it before the presentation, I don't have any more questions at this point. Um, so I'd, I'd be comfortable.
Any other board member thoughts, questions, comments?
Well, I looked at at least some of the documents, uh, and I, I actually can't see myself voting for it tonight, um, without at least some, like Amanda, I was here for the end of the audit committee, so I heard some of it and she said that she would be able to prepare a look for, um, uh, documents that, uh, would highlight, um, some things that I feel like I would need to know in order to vote on it. Now, I also won't be here on October fifteenth either. I'm gonna be in California. Um, so I wouldn't be voting for it then either. Uh, but I feel like I'd have to abstain tonight. Just I don't feel like I have enough information.
Uh, I'm in the same, um, situation as both Katie and Adam have been gone through the documents a little bit this afternoon, having, um, Duane give us the presentation. Thank you very much. Uh, with the noted changes that we have to, um, make sure that some of the numbers are clear, but nothing major. It's, um, in some regards, uh, you know, some relatively simple, uh, changes that need to take place. Uh, I would be in favor of, um, voting this evening with the noted change that we would receive by, I think we said Friday or by the end. But it also, I'm asking Eric and Eldred if you have a response or a thought of how best to proceed.
I concur with that.
And if you're curious about the nature of those finalization edits, um, they're both documented in the attachments and, um, Amanda's email earlier today pointed to the, the specific nature of them.
So with that, let's see what happens. Let's entertain motions and we may have to change the language of the motion. So anyone who's gonna make the motion, you should look, just make sure that we say something about pending changes.
Was the language pending finalization?
I like that even better.
Finalization, okay. Um, then I move to, let me just make sure I'm doing the right, okay. I move to recommend acceptance of the independent audit report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three with the cons, excuse me, strike that. Uh, pending finalization.
By Katie, second by Eldred. Discussion, dialogue, questions? All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Um, and with that, I believe that is the end of our agenda. Am I missing something? I just want to make sure. Dwayne, my apologies for keeping you here that whole time to not answer any questions, but I'm sure it was very much appreciated on our. Thanks.
Can we just finalize our, our schedule for next week?
Our schedule for next week is we have committee meetings on Tuesday and we have a board development session on Thursday, October nineteenth, from five thirty to seven PM.
And then seven, board members who wish to stay can meet with the public.
Yep.
The, the subject, Jason.
And then seven PM to whenever, we know it's the Ethica High School Open House, board members are going to locate a room to find themselves, make them available for any students, caregivers, community folks that want to come speak and we'll stay here and we'll make that announcement. Uh, our board development session is gonna be next door.
Oh, okay, okay, I'll, I'll.
Yep, and we'll, we'll figure out the dynamics and the details with Trish.
Has LACS already had their open house?
Yeah.
Too late. Hey, maybe next year.
I'm calling the meetings, we're closed, folks have their other conversations. Thank you.